Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, January 21st. It is 6:30 PM. We have all members of council present. Now, I did see an Boy Scout here. Where did he go, Chief? Son, why don't you come on up? Would you mind leading us in the pledge? I'm sorry, I didn't formally ask you before the meeting. I know you're here for another item as well, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. It's all yours.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And at this time for our invocation, Chief White, do you mind?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
If you would like to join me in prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we ask your blessings and your protection on this city and in our great nation. Lord, we pray for the athletes that we are recognizing tonight, that you would grant them good health and prosperity. And we thank you for the accolades that are bestowed upon them this evening. Lord, we thank you for our retiree in the audience tonight and his family, that you would also bless them and cherish them and keep them in good health. And we ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
As usual, thank you very much, Chief. At this time, we're going to start with our ceremonial items. So if council can join me down in the front. We have the recognition this evening of some of our student athletes from Oviedo High School. We have the undefeated first-place bowling team. We have the state champion girls volleyball team. And then we also have a first-place swimmer with us as well. So, let's go down.
Thank you, Drew. The first up will be the girls' bowling team. The girls' bowling team finished the regular season undefeated and won the Seminole Athletic Conference title. Next, they took home the first-place district champion trophy and entered the state tournament as the number-two seed. During the state championship tournament, they finished pool play undefeated and went into a final match head-to-head with Martin County. They lost the first three-game match in the finals and went into the final three-game match, and the girls won the last three. 801 to 739 for the state title. Our Oviedo High School's girl championship team. Guys, give them a round of applause. Now, to introduce them, we have their coach, Brittany Burr.
I have Monica Butcher, Charlene Help, Stephanie Rios, Amy Quick, Amber Miska, Kaitlyn Jones, and Karina Brown. Not here, Lauren Hayduk.
You know, I was talking to this young lady. What's your first name?
Amy.
Amy. I was talking to Amy out in the hall, guys. Amy rolled a 300. So... Wasn't in the tournament, though, right? No, all righty. But still, just to roll a 300 is exceptional. Councilman Hankin, where is he? He is our resident bowler. He's only rolled a 290. So, great job, Amy. Guys, why don't you all come line up in front of us? He did. And we witnessed the whole thing. He bowled it all the way up to the 10th and crashed and burned on roll 11.
Are there any parents who'd like to come on up? Yeah, push Drew out of the way. That's what everyone else does. Don't worry about it. Screwed us, Mom, you understand. Okay, whose mom is that kneeling right there? Raise your hand. There you go. We got the proud dads back there, too. Now, just tag us when you put them on Facebook. That's all we ask.
Hey, guys, give them a big round of applause. Congratulations, ladies. And now, we have the girls' volleyball team, also from Oviedo High School. The Oviedo High School girls' volleyball team was crowned Class 7A State Champion for the first time in the history of the program. On the road to the final, the Lions took down... I don't even know how to pronounce it, but some team in Gainesville. This one I know how to pronounce, Winter Springs. Charles in Tallahassee and nationally-ranked St. Thomas Aquinas. In the final, Courtney Furlong's 25 kills and 13 digs help Oviedo capture the tile... Title. And to demonstrate a dig right now, we have Councilwoman Drago.
I'm sorry, I couldn't resist.
The Lions knocked off of the title Naples Gulf Coast 3-1. Libero Ana Castello had 29 digs for Oviedo. Bridget Holland collected 11 kills. Kylie Rowland contributed 6 kills and 17 digs. That is pretty impressive. We have our Oviedo Lions girls' volleyball state champion. And their coach is Jen Darty. Coach, where are you? There you go.
Coach, the microphone is yours.
We have Senior Jane Early, Senior Katie Gleason, Sophomore Eileen Gonzalez, Sophomore Emily Distaffano, Sophomore Madison Milo, Junior Andrea DeAlfonso, Sophomore Kylie Rowland, and Sophomore Bridget Holland.
So, box to stand on, Councilwoman, or not? Oh, wait. Moms, dads. As before, just knock the door open. Ladies, great job.
Come back next year, this day and one. Great job. And next up, we have Noah Hensley. Noah won the Hundred Fly in swimming with a 49.2. In addition to his first place, it was a new-school record and an automatic All-American time. Noah, great job. Coach Charlie Rose. Coach, come on in first. Now, Councilman Shank is the resident swimmer amongst us. And what, you have a 49.1, is that what you said? Many years ago?
I think I made in college. I guess I hit 100.50 and flogged.
Charlie, why don't you tell us about this great accomplishment?
First, his parents are in the back, Don and Sue. Somewhere right here. You know, a lot of dedication by them. And I don't think a lot of people realize he's about four hours a day before school every day. We're out there. He knows, 6:00 in the morning, and then every afternoon, two and a half hours. And Saturdays, I know we're putting in probably 18 hours a week, roughly. And in addition, he's got a 3.8 GPA. I'm incredibly proud of him. He's got another year to go, so he's got some more to do. And this is really a representative of what you guys have offered to these kids. All these sports, I can say that while I have the mic. All these programs that are offered from the city and the facilities. And these kids have grown up through the years using these facilities. So, thank you, guys. We're working on it.
You know, folks, we just have exceptional student athletes here in the city of Oviedo. And not only do we have exceptional student athletes, but the academics of our students is just exceptional. So, let's give them all one big last round of applause. And council, I think we are staying down here because the next up, we have Fire Chief. Why don't you come on up? And this is yours.
Please feel free. That's your time.
Oh, no, 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 no. Don't listen to Councilmen. Once you're here, you stay. Have a nice night, everyone. Thank you for coming out. Chief, let me turn it over to you to do an introduction, and then I have something I'd like to read from the city.
Thank you. It's an honor tonight to recognize one of our own. How he beat me to this point, I have no idea. We're recognizing Tim Kepsel. Our Division Chief has been responsible for our Training and Emergency Medical Services Division. He was my first person that I promoted as a new Fire Chief in 2004. And I haven't regretted that decision until tonight. Since you're leaving, I had to get all dressed up. Well, thank you. Tim's duties have been critical to the organization. As you know, we just had a ISO regrade. Training plays a very vital role towards that component. And Tim has kept that program together through some lean fiscal years and has done a remarkable job. Tim was, as I said, the first person that I promoted in 2004. I can't think of how many lives have been touched positively. Not only the citizens, but our employees as well, which is reflected tonight by their attendance. I recall Tim early on as a brand-new firefighter for our hometown department. He served his community well, promoted up to Lieutenant, and then eventually Division Chief. So, Tim, job well done. Tonight, we will present him with the traditional fire helmet that is his last helmet of use. And we have a special gift that is on order. Could not be here tonight, so that'll come a little down the road. And there you have a resolution to read. Please come up.
Everybody, Mr. Tim Kepsel.
This is his son Charlie taking over for him. So, we'll have Charlie for another 26 years. Now, Tim, when you and I both started off in this, we were a little bit lighter, I think, each one of us. But anyway, let me read this for you. And this is heartfelt from the entire city and the council. This is a resolution of the City of Oviedo, Florida. A resolution of the City of Oviedo, Florida, honoring Tim Kepsel for his dedicated service to the citizens of Oviedo as a 26-year veteran of the Fire Rescue Department and hereby recognizing his retirement from public safety service, which I believe is effective January 31. So, we have you here just for 10 more days. That's all. We've got some work for you for 24/7 for the next 10 days. Whereas, Division Chief Tim Kepsel, having completed 26 years of public safety service within the Fire Department, beginning his career in June of 1987 and hereby concluding January 2014. Now, Tim, in 1987, was the firehouse at the Memorial Building? Was it the Memorial Building at that point?
No, we were in the actual bays.
The little, the bays next door.
We had the, what we call the hole.
The leaky shed, right? It's amazing how far we've come, folks. I mean, if you think of the 26 years that this man has served your community, how much the community has changed. When they say the hole and we talk about the leaky shed, it literally was three bays next to the Memorial Building and essentially a little shed that was attached to it where the living quarters were. And I'll really date Lars. When Lars first started with us, it was a volunteer department. Whereas, having served in the capacity of firefighter, EMT, Lieutenant, and concluding his service as the Division Chief of Training and Emergency Medical Services, and whereas Tim's direct contributions towards the department and the services delivered to the citizens have assuredly resulted in many lives saved during the course of his career, as well as the positive leadership and influence conveyed to his peers. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Oviedo that the Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the City Council acknowledge the faithful public service provided by Division Chief Tim Kepsel and commends him for his career as a vital member of the Oviedo Fire Rescue Department. Be it further resolved that this retirement resolution is presented to Division Chief Tim Kepsel, along with our sincere best wishes in his retirement, and a record of this official action is incorporated into the official minutes of the Oviedo City Council. Tim, come on up here. This is presented to you this day, 21st day of January 2014.
Congratulations.
Let me turn it back over to Chief White. Jeff?
Who's next? You, Jeff?
We're still debating.
Well, thank you. Thank you all for attending. Tim, congratulations. Thank you all.
Chief, we'll turn it over to you for item number three, which is an update on the Veterans Tribute on Oviedo on the Park.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. Your Veterans Committee has been working tirelessly towards this project. And tonight, we have a brief update to provide to you. Matt Felder, who led our pledge earlier, has been instrumental in this group. And he'll be doing the PowerPoint in just a minute. Just to refresh your memory real quickly on a few quick things. Our committee is consisted of city representatives and members of the American Legion Post of Oviedo. We have in attendance for our meetings, myself as Fire Chief, Brian Cobb, our City Manager, Chief Chud Now, Parks Director Drew Bullaware, Lori Marshall, our Admin Assistant. And American Legion Post, we're just indebted to them. They've been very helpful to us in helping given a little guidance here and there that we're careful and tactful how we design this thing. Ralph Kane, Peter Gregory, and Mr. Fish. We also have solicited assistance from Winter Springs, Stephen Reichart with the design of theirs. Of course, Matt Felder, who has now reached his Eagle Scout badge. Which is this project he's working on.
I apologize, I called him a Boy Scout earlier.
Just upgraded him, so... We also have Bill Starmer. Starmer Rinaldi Planning has been participating. Of course, PacLand Development, Tom Kavanoff. And very vital to this project has been Dick Lathrop and Associates, Chris Lathrop and the members of their staff. So, tonight, we're pleased to tell you we have submitted or have received 213 names thus far to be included on the wall of names. We have collected in cash $4,956. We have construction documents, which you see before you this evening. It's really taken attrition and ready to build. And just on a side note, what you're going to see tonight is what we intend to take to our local civic groups and start introducing this project in a very profound way. And if I would indulge you just a minute, there's been a lot of questions proposed to me over the past month or so about the Memorial Building. And I just want to let you know that it has been the intention of city staff to do everything we can to preserve the bricks on that building that might be repurposed for some other purpose later down the road. I think it's a little too early to determine. They would not be incorporated into this project, but they perhaps would be suitable for other opportunities. But we're going to work closely with FDOT, and we're going to get our hands on those bricks and store them and have them available for something that you may intend to use later on. So, tonight, I'm going to ask Matt to come up, and he's going to walk us through a quick PowerPoint to show you what we'd like to do with the civic groups and other organizations. Matt?
Thank you, Chief. So, we're going to talk to you about the Oviedo Veterans Tribute at Oviedo on the Park. And so, this is just a brief PowerPoint that's going to kind of explain the main points. We're going to bring this to local civic groups and different organizations to help talk about the Veterans Tribute in general.
Got a little technology.
So, this is the mission statement that we have come up with. And I want to point out that this is going to be a tribute and not a memorial, as it is going to encompass all servicemen and women, not just the deceased. And this is our sort of motto that we're going with. And it is, we want to honor the past and the present. We also want to inspire future servicemen and women. So, it's going to be located at Oviedo on the Park, and it's going to be situated on Center Lake. And it's going to be a nice place to go and reflect. And it's going to be quiet. And you can go and reflect. So, it's going to feature a flag-like stripe design. It's going to have an open layout. It's going to be a wall for the veterans' names on the left side there. There's going to be a wall of branches, all in granite, and with a fountain in the lake. And there's also going to feature the POW MIA. So, this is kind of a conceptual front view. It's going to highlight Oviedo's celery roots on the pillars in the middle. And it's going to be an open and welcoming design. So, this is the wall of branches, and it's going to have all the different seals. And it's going to have the water trough that goes off into the lake. It's also going to have a silhouetted POW MIA cutout. So, once again, to recap, it's going to honor everybody, all servicemen and women, not just deceased. And over the past six months, we've been, we've passed out upwards of 2,000 brochures. And there will also be a part for Special Recognition for Distinguished Service. And that is the story of an A3D Sky Warrior that was navigated away from a school full of children.
Right here in Oviedo.
It was. And so, you can talk to your friends and family about the tribute. Are there, thank you, and any questions?
Any questions from council? Got a great job so far. Your folks, what I should let you know about Matt is that Matt took this on as his Eagle Scout project, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
So, he's been working diligently on this for the last year. Put together most of these materials, if I'm not mistaken, has been out at all the community events, manning a tent, handing out brochures, and will continue to do so. And he is just a dedicated young man. So, let's give him a round of applause. Chief, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, just want to make sure council doesn't have any questions. We need your help. Start marketing this. Send people to our website.
What is the total cost estimate? Do we have one yet?
About $110,000, I believe. Correct, Mr. Manager? Yeah, $110,000.
Lawrence, how many did you say have already signed up the names?
We have, as of today, 213 names that have been turned in on the brochures. We also have an archive of list of additional names. We have all of those who lived in Seminole County that lost their life in either a war or military conflict of any type. So, we perhaps would include those as well. The criteria, again, is just any affiliation to Oviedo whatsoever. Could have been employees of, worked in the city, attended church or local civic organizations, family members of. So, we've set a broad spectrum for this. The Wall of Honor will feature a stainless steel plate design. And we're just really thrilled with the architect coming up with this. But that's a reflection of the military service tags, or ID tags, of course. So, we're really excited to see what that looks like on the wall.
And it's prominently located.
Yes. Very important piece of property on the lake has been dedicated to this project. It'll be well-lit at nighttime. We've been working on the lighting arrangements as well with them. So, it's exciting.
Thank you again to everybody, Chief. Everybody on your team, everyone who's been involved. And now, it's just a matter of getting out there and raising the funds so we can have this project built.
Very good. Thank you, council. Thank you, Matt, very much. Thank you, Matt, very much.
All right, the next item on our agenda is item number four, and that's the approval of the minutes for our meeting of January 6, 2013. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment portion. This is the part of the meeting where we accept public comment on any item that is not on our agenda this evening. I do have one written request from a Mr. John Painter. Mr. Painter? Good evening, sir. We'll just need your name and address for the record. You have three minutes, and the clerk will start a timer for us.
Okay. My name is John Painter, 2465 Southern Hills Court, Oviedo. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm actually here with several other people that actually are interested in speaking with you on the same topic, in consideration of your time. They asked me to kind of consolidate the comments and convey them to you. We are concerned about the proposed development of new homes on Twin Rivers Golf Club. We've attended several meetings, one in particular that was hosted by the developer and his representatives. The golf group seems to be on a schedule to present to the city in the St. John's Water Management District proposals in the next few months. The community is quite concerned about it, and they wanted the commission, the city council, to be aware of those concerns early on in this project. As proposed right now, based on the presentation from the developer, the new housing area would consist of 186 homes, single-family homes, and 112 townhomes. It would take the place on the golf course that is now the parking area, the clubhouse, the practice range, the UCF facility, the maintenance area, holes one, eight, nine, and 18, and it would impinge on hole six and seven. It would be a large area of the golf course. There would be a new clubhouse built over on hole number 11, a new parking area somewhere in the vicinity of hole number 11 and 12. No real bona fide plans about practice facilities or driving ranges. The golf course would be shortened to about 5,400 yards at best. It would be much less desirable, even though they claim it will continue to be an 18-hole golf course. If the proposed development proceeds, it would be a very negative development, a negative scenario for the city of Oviedo, all of the housing communities along Lockwood, the Twin Rivers community in particular, and for anyone that cares about the value of that golf course to this community. We are very concerned that the new development would have very negative impacts on traffic along Lockwood and Mitchell Hammock. The entry point for the single-family homes would be on Econo Drive. There would be another entry point across from Riverside Park into the townhomes. There would be an increased potential for flooding of many homes along the river. We believe the townhomes would become rental property, many of them rented by UCF students. Nothing against UCF students. We were one one day. But rental property doesn't fit with that community. It would eliminate large areas of habitat and green space. It would be completely inconsistent with the character and nature of the houses that now surround the golf course. Right now, we have extensive setback requirements, limits on what we can do in our backyards. The proposal is to have a setback from the golf course of 10 feet. It's now 40 feet. The proposal is to build within 500 feet of the Econo Rivers. That's not acceptable to us.
Mr. Painter, the time is up. Can you wrap it up?
I was hoping you would give me just a little, or we could ask others to speak.
Well, Mr. Painter, just for the record, we understand your concerns. There's nothing before us, though. We don't have an application. I mean, you're free to speak, of course.
Okay.
But there is no application before us at City Hall. There is a concept floating around, you are correct. Until there's a formal application, there isn't anything for any of us to address. So that's the issue that we run into, and I don't want to turn it into a debate, I just...
Yeah, may I make one more point?
Sure, of course.
We're concerned that the developer is gaining ahead of steam and spending a lot of money, and in some respects, it's not right for them to do that without knowing the extent of resistance in the community.
It is...
One more point. I listened to you very carefully the other day, and I would appreciate one more point.
Sure.
The, there's a better solution. Once this developer understands that a development is gonna be a nonstarter, then the value of that golf course becomes the value of a golf course. And when the value of the golf course becomes the value of a golf course, not a development, UCF would be quite interested in buying it. If UCF buys that golf course, and we in the community do whatever's necessary to help make that happen, not only will all the problems created by this housing development not occur, but it will really increase the value of that asset to this community. So I encourage you to, as you're approached by this group, to think carefully about what they're saying. Think carefully about the number of people in that part of Oviedo that are quite concerned and would be wanting you to reject this proposal. Encourage them to see it as a golf course. Encourage them to approach UCF on a productive ground. Thanks very much. Do you have any further questions to me?
I do, but I think I'll speak to you privately about them. Anybody else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, we're gonna close the public comments and move on to the next item on our agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hankin.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
We have motion and second, any discussion?
Just happy we're getting a new rescue, who served the community well, so Chief used that in many good years of service, that's good.
Great work in how they financed it, I just got a memo the other day, and we're gonna have, that's also a good thing.
Great.
Anything else?
Good.
Hearing none, call the question. All in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, next item, first reading of ordinances. It is ordinance number 1579, amending ordinance number 1472 to allow the special service fee for indebtedness searches in connection with a real estate transaction to be established by resolution. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 1472 established a $35 indebted fee for indebtedness searches. These are lien searches that we often get. One of the things that we've encountered recently, there's been some changes in state law, has increased the number of lien searches that we must go through. We also started to look at what it costs us to process these lien searches, and we found that the $35 fee was not covering the cost for the process. So one of the things, in order to change the fee, we would have to admit, we would have to adopt an ordinance each time. So what this ordinance 1579 does is that it eliminates the fee out of the code of ordinances, and then establishes that city council can adopt a fee through resolution, like you would do each year when you adopt your budget. We establish a fee schedule. This fee would also be established through that schedule. Ordinance 1472 was adopted in June 15 of 2009. It's recommended that city council read the ordinance by title only and schedule a public hearing for February the 3, 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, the city attorney, please read ordinance number 1579 by title only.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida, providing for the establishment of fees and amending section one of ordinance number 1472, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for savings provision, providing for separability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. This time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for ordinance number 1579 here in the Oviedo, Oviedo City Council Chambers at Oviedo City Hall, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, on February 3, 2013, at approximately 6:30 PM. So moved.
Second.
And motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to resolutions, we're on to item number nine, resolution number 2785-14, the amended and restated non-statutory development agreement and associated amended master land use plan for the enclave at Sanctuary and the Covenant Presbyterian Church site. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. At your August 5, 2013, meeting, the city council adopted resolution number 2660-13. It approved the amended and restated non-statutory development agreement and master land use plan for the enclave at Sanctuary and Covenant Presbyterian Church site with three conditions. The conditions were that the applicant would prepare landscaping plans to address landscaping, buffering, fences, and walls, and provide that as part of the master land use plan, and bring it back for final approval by city council. Also, the applicant would meet with the neighboring Sanctuary subdivision residents about the issues discussed at the city council meeting prior to the city council final consideration. And then after meeting the conditions, the first two conditions, the applicant would present the amended and restated non-statutory development agreement and master land use plan for the project with the revisions, including the landscape plan for council consideration, as well as report on the results of the meeting with the neighboring Sanctuary residents. The applicant did submit the landscape plan, and it has been added to the non-statutory development agreement. It's part, I believe it's Exhibit B, which is your master land use plan, I believe it's the last page of your master land use plan. The landscape plan was reviewed by staff and was found to be consistent with the city's land development code. The applicant also met with the neighboring Sanctuary subdivision residents on August the 26, 2013. A report of those meeting, the proceedings of that meeting are attached to your memorandum, I believe it's attachment to your memorandum. This resolution approves the amended and restated non-statutory development agreement and master land use plan for the project, which does include the landscape plan, and authorizes the mayor to execute the non-statutory development agreement. It's recommended that city council adopt resolution number 2785-14.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, is the applicant present? Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is Brian Dalrymple with MI Homes, 400 International Parkway, Suite 470, Lake Mary, Florida, 32746. Thank you for the opportunity to come back before you tonight and present this project. I unfortunately was not at the original meeting that was held here. I wish I would have been, but I was not able to due to some health issues. We believe that we have addressed, as the city manager said, the request asked of us since that time. And with respect to two of those particular requests, if I can just go back for a second, had I been at the first meeting, I would have said that it's, MI is very excited about the opportunity to continue building homes in the city of Oviedo. We've had the pleasure of building the Isles of Oviedo Townhomes for the last couple of years, and have had, have had great success there. And it's been the late 80s or early 90s was the last time we were in the city prior to being in the Isles of Oviedo. So Enclave at Sanctuary and a few other opportunities that we're, that we're working on, we hope will be a longstanding relationship with the city again, like we had a long time ago. If I can just talk to the revisiting the site plan first, with respect to the perimeter walls, buffers, and landscape. The plan that was submitted to y'all, we noticed, unfortunately, I believe it was Friday or maybe Saturday on a conference call, that some of the perimeter fences that are shown go into the wetland buffer.
Could you just hang on just one second, sir? Mr. Cobb, I don't see a plan as part of our package. Does anybody have one?
No.
On your iPad?
Yeah.
If you will, over on your list of, list of documents, scroll up.
Yeah, you gotta roll it.
You gotta scroll it up, and you'll see Exhibit B is MLUP, Exhibit A is a legal description, Exhibit 1 is the non-statutory development agreement.
All righty, I found it, thank you. All right, sir, you're presenting for half of it again.
Sorry?
You're presenting for half of the project again, not the other side.
That is correct.
Why aren't you bringing it all to us, just in one shot?
Well, because, you know, I'd say that our intent is to build a, to add on to that next phase as a subdivision, but honestly, our timelines on this phase have, you know, we've owned the site since August, and we thought we'd be in development now, and we didn't want to submit a second plan that might somehow cause the first phase to get slowed down any further than it has been.
We'll see.
Again, with respect to the site plan, revisiting the perimeter walls, buffers, and landscaping, the plan that you had before you shows the perimeter fences going into the wetland buffer. It's not our intent to impact those buffers, and so we have updated the plan, and we will get it to staff as soon as tomorrow, if that's what they need. Going back to the, to the task of meeting with the Sanctuary HOA and the residents to come to a resolution, we, you know, we consulted pretty extensively with our engineers, Charlie Madden and Chad Moorhead at Madden, Moorhead &amp; Glunt, also our land use council is Allison Turnbull with Holland &amp; Knight. Both groups are here tonight to speak to any technical portions of the land use, but we had a meeting with the, with the HOA and the residents. It was a spirited meeting, and as in most of these meetings, the primary concerns, as I understand them, were, you know, visual, you know, visual separation between the communities, safety, you know, noise was talked about, and numerous things. We, we've done a number of projects that are what we consider to be infill, or building a subdivision on raw land where an existing subdivision has existed for a long time, and these are not common, uncommon requests, and issues from adjoining landowners, and we, we want to be a good neighbor, we want to be a good partner to the city, and, you know, unfortunately, at the, at the meeting, our proposal to put a fence was not well-received because they, they wanted a wall, and we totally respect that. It's just not, you know, while the land code and our, and our land use attorney and our engineers say there's no precedent or code that requires a wall or buffer of any kind, we felt proposing a fence was a good, a good compromise. We also did make an offer to the HOA that we would share the cost of a wall with the HOA, not just to construct it, but as I'm sure you, the council or the mayor knows, there are reserve requirements for walls and things in a subdivision that require you to put monies away to replace that wall in the future, and so we asked them to share the cost of building it, and the cost of maintaining it, and the cost of putting the reserves aside, and I don't, I don't think, I won't speak for them, I don't think that's something that, an idea that they would entertain, but I will hear from them tonight if that is an opportunity. I have had some communications with the president of the HOA, and, and, you know, again, they're a well-thought-out group, they, you know, they have good ideas. She's had some good ideas recently, and I won't, I won't speak for her, but, you know, again, we want to be a good neighbor, and we want to be a good partner to the, to the city. You know, we feel that the plan, the plan that's been presented to you tonight, that the staff has... has shown their support of, and we appreciate their support, we'd like to ask for your support to get this subdivision approved so that we can move forward and get this first phase in. I'm available to answer any questions that you might have, if I could ask that, I believe some folks will come and speak tonight, if I would have the opportunity to come back and speak after that.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, sir, just before you go. Did council have any questions for the applicant?
I'm sorry.
Hang on, just a second. My fault, not yours. Questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor? Brian, can I ask you, the houses that you're going to build in this phase that's ready to go, how big are they?
They range from, I believe, twenty-two hundred square feet to forty-one hundred square feet.
A broad range of them.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then just to confirm.
Single story and two-story combination.
Okay. And just to confirm, I know what we have in our packet, but for folks that may not have read this, the four nineteen frontage on this thing, the brick wall there is no issue, as I understand it, to match the other communities.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't speak to that. When the mayor and the council asked us before to look at the perimeter walls and buffers, we did feel that a brick wall to, it's pretty, it shows continuity within the city, the brick wall theme, and so we have that in our plan. It will be a brick wall. We do intend to gate the community if it's approved through the city. And so, you know, we think we can create a very nice streetscape and entrance for the subdivision with the brick wall.
Okay, and also, I know you talked about the fence, and I know that was some contention here last time in the back, abutting some of the properties in the Sanctuary. Is there some other options? I understand maybe some prefab type of masonry type wall as a compromise, if it goes that way, that you guys looked at?
You know, the discussion with the Sanctuary residents was about a prefab wall, the prices that I had told them at the meeting and via emails is a prefab wall. And so that is, it's concrete, solid concrete, comes in panels, and just gets sort of slipped into the columns, and that's what we did discuss. We didn't discuss brick or block, I don't think.
So the brick wall up at the front, just for clarification, that's going to look like the other neighborhood?
Absolutely.
That's fine, you're good with that. So you did mention to the H.O.A. folks, aside from, you know, the Miami Dade PVC, or they would have an option for maybe this prefab masonry type wall. Are you okay with that, or is that you're still in discussion, or you're not sure about it?
No, no, I mean, it is not, we're not presenting to do a wall in between the subdivisions, like the back of lots that go back of lots. The brick wall is out in front of the community. I believe that I told them at the meeting that that's what we were proposing to put out front, I think, it was in August. But what we're proposing is to put a fence there, and...
Is it the Miami Dade type PVC is what you propose?
You know, I've researched the Miami Dade fence, and I gave that packet to our fence guy. The people named in that, we couldn't reach any of them, the phone numbers didn't work, and so I honestly, to this day, don't understand what a Miami Dade PVC fence, I mean, my fence guy says there's no such thing. There may be Miami Dade wind load and spec and things like that, but...
Just a little more beefier and a lot more...
I mean, I think it's just the same vinyl fence, they put inserts in it. You know, we had a project that, you know, someone actually wanted us to wind load the fence to see if it would handle three hundred miles an hour, and in order to do that, you had to put about twenty dollars worth of inserts into the fence for every eight-foot section to get, when we got it to three hundred and nine miles an hour. But, you know, you just keep putting inserts in it, and it'll just keep getting stronger.
Well, I just wanted to clarify for the folks that might want to make some comments. The only thing you guys are willing to do is the fence. You don't want to do any type of masonry stuff on the back portion of this, correct?
You know, no, sir, we don't. We, our proposal is that we would do that if we could share the cost with the Sanctuary of H.O.A. You know, it's not just building it today, it's maintenance, ongoing maintenance, and it's, you have to put reserves into your H.O.A. funds to replace the fence in the future. So if they would agree to share a combination of that, then that is an idea that we entertain. But backing off from that, we'd put up a fence and separate the communities.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm going to piggyback then. Brian?
Sir?
That's okay. So let me just try to grasp this.
Okay.
Other than the cost, why wouldn't you want to do a wall on the back?
You know, it really is, I won't say it's less about the cost and more about maintenance and reserves.
But you're not going to be there, so the maintenance and the reserve become the issue of the H.O.A. that takes over.
Which is exactly the point. I mean, it's cumbersome to the future residents. I mean, for us...
So you put no walls on HOAs anywhere, any...
Sure, we do build walls, but not between lots. We put fences between lots, we put walls in front of communities. You know, I mean, that's just us. And, you know, it's, not everybody thinks having a wall in back of their house is ideal. You know, it sounds ideal to the folks who are living there and feel like somebody's coming right into their backyard within forty feet of where they've been living next to woods. We totally respect that, but most people don't expect a masonry or block or prefab wall behind their house. The homes that we sell up against the perimeter walls along the front, sometimes those are our least desirable homes, not because of the road, but because of the wall. You know, I'm just the land guy, I don't have to sell the houses, but that's the feedback that I hear.
So you just don't want to spend the money?
I don't think that's what I said. I mean, it's not desirous...
So then you will spend the money, and this hearing can move forward.
It's not desirous of us to put walls behind lots. That's not, that's not the way M.I. builds subdivisions. You know, it's, I think that's what I said, and not that we don't want to spend money.
Yeah, just to point out something, I'm not sure. I know you guys, when you talked about the past history of M.I. in Oviedo, I had the pleasure of having one of those homes.
All right.
Way back when you talked about, but I will tell you, in that community, there are instances where there is a brick wall between Live Oak and Riverside. I don't know if they, those particular houses were yours, but I know one right on my own street that has...
I think you're talking about my old brand Ingle.
No.
Or you're talking about an M.I. home?
I'm talking about an old M.I.
Oh, M.I. didn't build in Live Oak, maybe they built in...
In Riverside.
In Riverside, yeah.
Yeah, I'm saying, there is a wall between houses, lot lines in there, so I mean, it gets done right around here. I'm just saying, I don't think it's not ever done. It gets done.
I don't want to say that it doesn't ever get done. You know, that's not my intent to say that it doesn't ever get done, you know, but...
So let me just get back to, may I? I just want to get back to this, because this, walls we know are expensive, Brian. We know that they cost money, but there is this, and I was made aware in the last week of this prefab, almost like a thing that's like half the cost and looks beautiful. It's kind of like those panels that you see on expressways that have those nice things, they're masonry. If it is half, now, I don't know if it's half the cost, this is what I was told.
Okay.
So I'm just saying, if it's half the cost, you know, and then you take the, look up Miami Dade PVC fence, it's a lot beefier than your Home Depot PVC, but I'm just saying, if it's not that much more, would you guys consider it if it makes the matter?
Everything you said, I believe, is correct, except it being half the price. I'll give you exact prices if you want, on a linear foot.
Well, I don't know if it is or not, that's what I was told last week.
Prefab walls somewhere between ten and twelve dollars a foot, depending on how you put bands and ephes caps on the...
How about the brick wall?
A brick wall is actually more expensive than both of those.
Yeah, so...
So you're saying the prefab is ten to twelve dollars?
Ten to twelve dollars less. The most expensive is the brick, and then you go to a block masonry, C.M.U. wall, and then you go to the prefab.
Right.
And I mean, you're still north of seventy-two dollars, seventy-four dollars a foot.
Right, got it, okay.
You know, so the...
Okay, so that's what I was getting, so seventy-two, twelve, so eighty-two, so about eighty-four, eighty-five for the brick wall, seventy-two for the prefab, okay.
And in the middle is the block C.M.U.
Gotcha.
Yes, sir. And the, you know, again, the vinyl fence is, the wind loads and those things are all dictated by the municipality in central Florida, depending on where you are in central Florida, whether you buy lake body or open fields, that sort of dictates the wind, the building spec on fences. I mean, we don't determine that, it's individual cities and counties.
One of the things that I heard at the last hearing from some of these folks from Sanctuary was, the reason they wanted a wall or something like that was because even right now, the buffer is very sparse, they can see through. Has there been any thought, I know we have in our code, you have to put a certain amount of trees, bushes and stuff, to make that look like they still have conservation lots and really go in there and overkill it, and make it a conservation again, so when, you know, your property is built, they still have a conservation and can't see it?
Yeah, there was some talks today, actually, about planting, you know, mortals and some indigenous plants in the buffer. It's a little bit of a delicate dance, because it's supposed to be a natural undisturbed buffer. So could you get Saint John or the Orange County, whoever's the regulatory agency over that buffer, I don't know standing here tonight, our engineer's going to give me the answer, but we can ask them to come out and meet with us, and hey, we'd like to plant some indigenous plants to the area, and not really go into the buffer with irrigation or those things, maybe on the perimeter, you know, so that we could come and water it for a few months and get it set in. And that was discussed today with the H.O.A. president at Sanctuary, and so again, nobody's made any deals, it's just things that have been discussed, and we were not opposed to that idea, which was theirs, not ours.
Gotcha. Thank you, Brian.
How many feet of wall were you talking about?
Approximately...
For the whole thing? Because, I mean, you're going to develop the whole property.
Approximately eight, approximately eight hundred and fifty or sixty feet.
Nine hundred feet. Okay. Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, somebody else have something?
I do have one question. We're talking about a brick wall as opposed to a PVC wall, or a natural conservation area for a division. What makes a brick wall better than the PVC wall?
Well, PVC wall is the vinyl fence. The prefab wall that Commissioner Henkin was asking about is, if you've been driving down the East-West Expressway, the four twenty-nine, you see those panels? It's like that, but just like a six-foot residential person, if you will. And the brick wall is brick, it looks like the brick walls you see all around the city of Oviedo. And that's, the prefab wall is, the problem with any wall going back there and putting a wall is that it's very invasive to everything that's there, and so you need about twenty feet for the equipment and everybody to come in, you need two to three feet for the footers to go in, even the column for the prefab wall have a footer. And so, you know, oak trees and various trees that have their root system disturbed, they just don't live. I mean, they just don't live if you go in and disturb them. So a vinyl fence would allow us to, if there's historic trees on the property line or close to the property line, either a little bit on our side or a little bit on the buffer side, the vinyl fence can be jogged around, it can be veered around, and it's not invasive to anything that's currently living there on that buffer, and that includes the roots from the Sanctuary's conservation buffer that are coming onto our property. So, you know, again, we've found that it saves a lot of trees, it saves a lot of damage in open space where you're trying to keep trees and things that buffer communities and homes. And a wall, whether it's prefab or brick or block C.M.U., doesn't allow you that option.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cobb? I'm getting, we're talking a lot about fence, fence, block versus, what's required there by code?
By code?
Yeah.
You have single-family adjacent to single-family, there is no requirement for a buffer at all.
No buffer whatsoever.
No, sir. However, in this case, in this case, you had, this was a master land use plan with the development area, you had a buffer that was a requirement when it was a commercial. But when you have a case of, if you're just talking about the code itself, single-family adjacent to single-family, there is no buffer requirement.
So they agreed to maintain the commercial, what the commercial was there, which was a heavier use, they agreed to keep the fence there?
The buffer's not as, I wouldn't say it's the same as the commercial, because it's not as deep.
Right.
But as far as a fence, a barrier, yes.
Right. Which would be more than residential, the residential code requires?
Yes, sir.
I believe the commercial had either a fence or a wall.
They had the option.
And we, you know, we...
Right, it's an option either way.
Yes, sir.
But either way, it was some barrier, fence or wall, so either way, it would have been a fence or a wall.
Yeah.
And it's not conservation, Mr. Councilman Henkin said, so that they can see their conservation, the conservation area, that's the wetland in between both areas. And then after that is the property that was commercial and is now going residential.
Correct.
Right, okay. Good, because that's, we're talking a lot about creating a brick wall there, or some type of wall, went on residential to residential, we don't require it by code, and they're willing to do a six-foot vinyl fence that, I'm going to say ninety-five, whatever percent of every other development we do, and I think that night, we approved one the same way. That night that they were here, we approved another development that had a vinyl fence in between it, the first night you were here, between two residential subdivisions, one being existing. So I don't know why we keep going on about a brick wall.
I don't think we approved anything.
That night, the same night we did that, we approved the development up at four thirty-four, and it had, a portion of it had an existing fence.
Maybe it was someplace else.
Yes, exactly. That's what I'm saying, the same night we did this, that we told them to go talk to, and virtually every other subdivision that has, house to house, we approve, some we've approved with nothing and had just wetlands, allowed dense, put a density there. So that's why we keep discussing, do a brick wall, do a brick wall, do a brick wall. They're doing what, more than we were required by code, they're doing what would be required for a commercial venture, that's no longer a higher-density commercial venture sitting there, and is now going to be a residential, a much less dense venture there, why we're, we've asked them. That's right, I hear you. Mr. Cobb, how deep was the buffer for the commercial?
It would have been...
What the heck was that?
It would have been either fifteen, it would have been either fifteen or thirty feet.
Okay, how deep is the buffer now?
The buffer now, I believe, is...
And this is the buffer between the existing buffer inward on this property, correct?
Right. I believe...
Can you answer that, Brian?
The buffer between Sanctuary's undisturbed buffer and our...
Their property line buffer and...
There's no buffer.
On the church side, you still have the fifteen-foot buffer.
Right.
Okay, on the west side, you still have a fifteen-foot buffer. On this side, what is being proposed in the landscape plan?
What I'm asking is if we change, if we don't change the zoning, we just leave it the way it is, what's the buffer?
As far as the...
With the commercial sitting there.
I would have to go back and look at the original plan.
But it's bigger than what it is now.
Yes, sir.
It's higher density. I would expect that's what our code says, is it requires more, and a fence versus a resident, but again, you're making a point that it required more buffer, I'll make the point that the residential to residential doesn't require a fence. So it's the same thing, they're doing more to compensate. If that's your point, that they're losing something in house to house, they're losing a density, and they're also gaining the fence that wouldn't be required on a residential to residential. Yeah, but actually, my point was, we did allow a fence or a wall for the commercial, but there was, but there was an additional fifteen feet, or up to thirty, Mr. Cobb hasn't confirmed yet, on the interior of the project. This project, because it is residential to residential, that can be eliminated, which is why I think the residents are asking for the wall. And in the wall, it's sixty-five to seventy thousand dollars, I mean, in the scope of things here, it's small. As far as you...
It doesn't include surveying and all the things that go with it, I give any of the... I give any of the bare bones of price, but...
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
I'm going by the raw number you gave us of about $70 to $80 square foot.
Correct.
I just did simple arithmetic.
Correct.
You know, as far as, you know, winding a wall around vegetation, you know, if you'd like, I could take you to two or three developments here in the city where we require that, and the wall goes very nicely around the vegetation. So, I mean, that, that is possible, you know, whether you want to do it...
With a, with a 30-inch footer.
Whether you want to, whether you want to do it in order to gain approval, that's up to you. It's not our choice, that's your choice. So, anyway. Any other questions?
No.
No?
All right. All right, Mr. Britton?
Maybe Brian can answer, but I guess I understand that there is no buffer between the two, the existing sanctuary property and the new property?
There is a current buffer on the Sanctuary side that was put in as part of the Sanctuary development. So there is a develop, there is a buffer on the north side, the south side of Sanctuary, the north side of this property. There's a buffer there already. The approved plans called for a buffer along the north property, north line, north property line of this, of this property. On the west side, which was the church side, was a B buffer, 15 feet. And I believe that there was a choice of a fence or a wall could be placed in it. On the east side, my memory's not serving me as well, but it was either 15 or 30 feet. I'm, I'm leaning more toward that it was a C buffer, which would have been 30 feet, and there was, there was a choice of a fence or a wall in the development agreement. And with this project, you still have the 15-foot buffer on this, on this property on the west side where the church is supposed to be. And then on the east side where they're proposing the subdivision, they have not proposed a buffer. Now, they do have an easement along lots 25 through 31, along the north property lines, a seven-foot easement with which to put the fence in. They also have a fence proposal along the east property line, along lot 21, extending down to the cul-de-sac in front of lot 20, lot 20. So they have not proposed a buffer, like you would think of, like an A buffer being 10 feet, or a B buffer being 15, or a C buffer being 30. They have not proposed that for the east side of this project where the subdivision is. But they do have, they have made accommodations for a fence to be planted, or a fence to be erected along the rear property lines of lots 25 through 31.
And what is the buffer from the Sanctuary side?
It's 25 feet, if I remember correctly.
And that's, that's owned by the HOA?
Yes, sir.
That's HOA?
Yes, sir.
So that, you know, if I were a homeowner, I'd be looking at, you know, I've got that 25-foot back there and I had another 15 feet between the commercial, you know, on the commercial side, and now that's going to go down to just the 25 feet with nothing there. You know, something needs to be done there, and it doesn't sound like the two groups have really come to a meeting of the minds on, on what. I think, you know, I just Googled, give me the best vinyl fence there is, and got four or five hits versus some of the stuff that you can buy at Home Depot that'll last about two years and then you'll be spraying it with mildew cleaner and repairing it. I think there's products out there that, that are in between the brick wall, that I understand the, the infrastructure headache of putting the footer in. It's, it's not like the old days where you just put some concrete on the ground and built a brick wall. You've got to have a footer reinforced, it's got to go down a couple of feet so that a hurricane doesn't blow it out of the ground. Very intrusive to the environment. But having said that, there's, there's products out there that are probably just as good, that will last a good deal of time, and maybe are a little bit more expensive, but I haven't seen it here. You know, I, you know, I'd like to see a product specifically, if you're going to propose one, that everyone can agree on. So I'm not sure, you know, I think that the assignment back in August was go meet and come up with something that's doable, that's acceptable to everyone, and I don't, I don't see that happening here.
I don't disagree with you. I, I don't, I don't know how we could come to an agreement if one group wants a wall and the other group proposes a fence. I, I don't, honestly don't know. I don't think that our fence that our fence vendor puts in has any relationship to what, what's been called the Home Depot fence, but, you know, our fences meet, you know, meet or exceed any and all requirements, building code requirements in, in that particular municipality. We, it's not the cheapest fence, that's for sure. I know absolutely that we can buy cheaper fence and we don't, because we don't want it to last two years, we want it to last for 30 years with proper maintenance and those things. And I'd be happy to provide, get our fence provider to provide a, a spec or the manufacturer's spec of that fence that we do put in. Again, we, we had it wind loaded at one point, you know, over 300 miles an hour. I don't, I don't even know that 300's in the hurricane category five wind speed, but somebody asked us to do it, we, you know, we went and did it. And so we're not, we're not, we're not opposed to, you know, making fences stronger than they're supposed to be. You can do that with inserts. And so the question is whether it's, whether it's necessary or whether it's just a request. If it's a request, then let us know what spec we need to hit. Is it a wind load spec or is it a, or is it a, you know, a, you know, the lifespan of the fence that, you know, that, that, whether it's your, your comments or your thoughts, is it, you know, do you want the fence to last a long time or do you want it to meet a certain wind code? Or, I mean, if you'll just tell us what it is, we're not opposed to finding fences that...
I'm not a fence expert either. I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know what a spec is on quality fence. I just know a good one when I see it versus a bad one when I see it. Because I can get my yard down.
Brian? Do we have a couple of fences over the past couple of years put in that are of a, what's, I was going to say Miami-Dade wind loads?
Yes, sir. We, this isn't the first project this was required in. We've had a couple of other projects where it was...
The only one I remember is when, was the McNamara property on...
Yes, it was required in that, that instance as well. It was required there.
They, they had proposed, and I don't, you know, that was several years ago, but they had proposed a very high-quality fence at that time that was very acceptable to the adjoining neighbors. And it wasn't a brick wall, and it did provide that latitude that you had a high-quality buffer there, but didn't require the immense infrastructure cost of a, a brick wall. And I was very impressed with that.
Do we have a standard that a fence would have to meet?
Yes, our, our, our part of Florida does have a wind load standard that a fence has to meet, because that's, that's about the only requirement that it has. My understanding about the Miami-Dade requirements is that it requires a higher wind load specification rather than what we have. I believe ours is 120 miles an hour and sustained, and I think Miami-Dade is higher. So...
But we have required that before.
Yes, sir. We, we have incorporated it in other projects.
I, I don't know if any have been built, but we have required them.
I thought there was one of them out in, off a panther somewhere.
No, 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 that, that one blew down.
I knew the one that blew down, but I thought we were...
No, that wasn't one of them.
Somewhere around that area.
Right. It was Lake Charm Country Estates.
So I know that one was Joe's fence, but that's what brought us on to...
That was Hurricane Charlie.
I know we approved a bunch of them, that's why I thought they were built there.
Remember the woman bought the, you were on the council?
Yeah.
The woman brought the pieces down.
The, the fence that today, as a matter of fact, I drove into the, into the fire station that's down Mitchell Hammock, almost to Lockwood, and there's white fence behind that. I mean, does the city put that in or is the fire department put it in when they're building their fire department? You know, what, what, how did that fence get purchased and is that, is that the kind of fence that the city requires? I, I don't know.
Behind the fire department, 48.
Fire 48? That one, that one was built to the Central Florida specifications.
That's ours.
Okay, that's ours.
Yes.
We put that up.
Okay.
Let me ask you a question.
Sorry?
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Last one. Well, for the monk. They had an additional 15-foot of buffer that's going, going away if we rezone this from commercial, a minimum 15, it might have been 30. We don't know that for a fact yet. But let's work off of 15.
Mm-hmm.
Would you consider setting that fence in 15 feet, donating the back as conservation off to their HOA? Then they have a 40-foot buffer between you, you get your vinyl fence, and they've got their big buffer.
I need to ask my engineer how deep the lots are there.
If you'd like to take two weeks and think this through.
Oh, no, no, no. I can ask him right now. I, I think they're 130?
I don't know if that's acceptable to the HOA, so...
I, I don't, we, we won't know till we hear from them.
Bring your fence in 15?
We could do...
Keep it 15 now, you're going to commit all the way across because you're going to come back here eventually.
Yeah, I understand.
You know, and then you're going to give them that 15-foot, becomes conservation again like their other 25-foot. Now it's 40. It addresses the issue that Councilman Britton brought up, put in the highest-quality vinyl fence, whatever that may be, I don't know.
When you say it's going to be conservation, and I'm not, I'm not opposed to the idea, I don't, I don't...
Well, by conservation, that means that they can't build in it, you know. I'm not trying to have you give property to them so that their backyards become bigger.
My concern is that, is that the, the trees and things that are there now, what we haven't done is the engineering plans have not gone through the city. So we don't know the elevations, we don't know how many trees will survive the area from our property line going south. So, you know, it could be, it could be raw ground when we're done developing the site when we get the engineering plans permitted. So, you know, I'm just, I'm bringing that up in the context of if people are visualizing...
You can plant some indigenous shrubs in it if it's raw ground. You can throw some crape myrtles in, damn, things will grow, you know, 50-foot in five years.
The, you know, the, if, I couldn't do 15 feet. I think that's a, that's a pretty heavy imposition on the future homeowners buying those homes to have lots that are inferior to the depth of the lots around them. 10 feet's probably a consideration that, that we would, that we would consider. And I mean, by consider, I mean, by the end of this meeting tonight, you know, we can make some decisions. I mean, that's certainly why, why we're here and hopefully we can do that.
This is just my idea. This isn't the council's idea, so I have no idea what anybody's thinking, but...
Yeah, I mean, a standard lot in a city like Oviedo on an 80-foot lot, a 50-foot lot, sorry, where you expect to get the prices that, that we all appreciate in the city of Oviedo, you can't, you can't give them a 25-foot deep backyard. So, you know, 130 feet's probably 10 feet past the standard, you know, for a lot, again, talking about homes in this price point.
How deep are those lots?
Sorry?
How deep are those lots?
130 feet.
Give up 15 feet, it ain't going to kill them.
I didn't say it'll kill them. I just said it, it affects the value. And when somebody's paying, you know, $350,000 for...
How wide are they?
Sorry?
How wide are they?
50 feet.
It was just an idea. Why don't you go huddle up with your guys and...
I don't need to huddle. I mean, it's, it's all about, it's all about, I'm, I'm authorized to make decisions and, you know, we'll hear what everybody has to say, and I mean, we're here to move the project forward.
Okay.
We're here to be a good neighbor and to be a good business partner with the city.
See what they have to say. Does anybody have anything else before I...
No.
No? All right. Mayor?
Mr. Cobb?
Mayor, just as far, just to go along with what you're, the route you're going down, if you're going to ask for 10 feet, you need to ask that it be tracked, that an easement will not work in this case for what you're asking for. It would need to be tracked away.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Before we did anything, I would turn to you or Mr. Groot and let you all figure that out. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All righty, guys, I have no request to speak forms. So, I mean, technically, I'm supposed to have request to speak forms. I'll, I'll let yous come up. I'll give you three minutes. We're not going to turn this into everybody just saying, you know, over and over and over and over and over again, the same thing. So do you have a speaker you want to come up or come on up?
Sandra Braga Alfonso, 3917, Danzelenko, Oviedo, Florida. I am the president of the Sanctuary HOA. I have spoken with him when he asked for, when we asked for the retention wall, he said we had to split the cost. He came back to me with a $40,000 would be the Sanctuary's cost for Phase One and then an additional totaling $85,000. When you asked him his numbers, his numbers total for a modular wall would be about $65,000. When we were, I have the email saying that he wanted to charge us $85,000. He just got back to me yesterday on pricing. We said, I can't as a president justify spending $85,000 of association's money to put a modular wall. But when you gave the num, when he gave the numbers, he said it was about $72 a foot. Do the math, it comes out to about $65,000. So where am I getting an $85,000 price for my share, for the Sanctuary's share? Okay, that's my first concern. My second concern is when we were commercial, we had a, we have a 25-foot buffer on our side. The commercial property was a 30-foot buffer with a wall or a fence. We came to them, they came to us, they met with us on August. They said they would absolutely not give us no buffer. We said, listen, just match it, give us 10 feet, give us 15 feet, put your fence up. We're willing to put wax myrtles on the exterior of the fence, set five feet off the back of their fence line.
That's what I think he just offered, Brian.
Yes, but he's not offering to give us any of the buffer. All he's offering to do is the wax myrtles. He wants to do 15-gallon, we said 30-gallon, because 30-gallon buffer, 30-gallon plant, every one every 10, every five feet, so it would be like four. The fifth one would be on the corner property line, which would be five feet wide, five feet high. So basically, they grow really quick, they grow excellent in wetland. They would have to maintain the watering of it for a certain period of time. But going from a 25 buffer, from a 50, 55 buffer to a 25 and a PVC fence, and from what I understand, the previous plans were more leaning towards a wall because it was commercial. No? So that's my...
You would have, you know, we, we just have to remember, you would have Publix behind you or, or not a Publix, but you would have a plaza.
Right, but you're, you're putting a...
24/7, lights on, everyone's backyard.
Right. But they're putting a gated community in, and they're not putting no structure around the back. So how is their gated community safe then?
That's their decision.
Right, but that's what I'm saying. So if you're going to do something, you want to kind of make it uniform, we want it straight across. They told us it was 456 feet for phase, for the total, they told you tonight it was 900.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
You said you got a call and the numbers didn't jive, but my question for you is 85, 45, whatever this number is, was the HOA willing to...
We would...
Reasonable number to split the cost of that wall if you were getting the right number? Because you seem upset that you got a thing.
Yeah.
So, so let me, let me just throw this out.
I mean, we're getting double the math.
So let's say the math was, let's say...
I couldn't vote on it.
All right, it was, and it was 80,000, and you got a bill for 86. Didn't make sense, but if it was 80,000 and, and they said, could the HOA do half of that, were you willing to do that?
I would take it to the board and see how they felt about it. I mean, that's not...
So you need right, you would need right numbers to make that...
I, obviously, I would, A, need right numbers.
Right.
B, to maintain the wall. I don't think the association, I think, once, if we split the cost of the wall, they should take on the responsibility of maintaining the wall and have it in their funds. We're not seeing the wall. So it's going to be their HOA who's going to be doing the site visits and so forth. We're not going to go through our property or go through their property to do visits. I mean, that's unreasonable. Okay?
Sandy, can I ask one question?
I guess.
An additional 10-foot of buffer, vinyl fence, and landscaping would have been acceptable if they'd given that to you back in August?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mark Jones, 2601 Turtle Head Cove. I do have one of the adjoining properties. I will echo what the HOA president said. We never got that proposal back in August. We did have a meeting, it was a spirited meeting.
The minutes say it was.
It wa, it was. We want a brick wall. Realistically, do we think we are going to get a brick wall? We would like one. The proposal, and I thank you for making that proposal, Mayor, I think it's a pretty good one. Getting additional buffer that is evened all the way across, a 15-foot with a, a nice fence and some greenery back there. Personally, I would be okay with that.
So it's going to be 10 or 15, I mean, five feet something.
15-foot, I would like that.
Right. We have to be reasonable to them in five-foot width.
And I appreciate that. Do I want a brick wall? Of course I want a brick wall. I'm acceptable with what's been spoken about today.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, I got this gentleman, I'll get to you, oh, sorry.
Harry Heverkamp, retired lieutenant commander, 30 years Navy service.
So you want to be on this wall?
I want to be on that wall. 2593 Turtle Head Cove. I've listened to this. Mayor, you've asked some excellent questions to the developer today, same questions we've had along the way. I echo Mr. Jones's comment that we would have been happy with a 15-foot buffer and a vinyl fence. Okay? I hear from the developer that these are high-end homes, money, he wants money out of this. But yet, there's a, a cost issue about putting up a dividing fence, okay, concrete, yes, whatever the costs come about. I echo with you, sir, that I think this is all a money issue. It's, they didn't want to bend back in our spirited meeting back then, they don't want to bend now.
But you're okay with the proposal, I was wondering that.
We're, yes, and I am, I'm a neighbor to Mr. Jones, I belong to the other side. And I would like to ask one other question. Is back in our original meeting, when the developer came before you that night, we asked specifically what was happening with the church side. And they said they didn't know that it was the church's property. We found out at our spirited meeting that they had already purchased that property. So that was an interesting little point.
I think they might have been negotiated and it's back then, it'd be interesting.
Yeah, it sounded pretty, pretty close, but, anyway. Thank you, sir.
Uh, no, I got that gentleman back, he's... Ms. Libida, how are you?
Good, thank you. Has everything?
Everyone's good?
I know, I'm staying out of trouble. My major concern...
I'll just name and address him.
I'm sorry, Amy Libida, 2625 Turtle Head Cove, the Sanctuary. My major concern, of course, is the fence. The Sanctuary has a brick fence, the enclave will have a brick fence. Of course, I would love to see the uniform of the brick fence, the brick wall be carried through. But I'll let everyone else make the decision as far as what you feel is the right thing to do. When they start to build, a big concern is them infringing on our property with the noise and the dirt. I've built a home before, and I know builders are in a rush to get their subdivisions going. How can we prevent them from coming onto our property? Will their fence be put up before they start to do any kind of building?
I'm sure we can, we can ask, and there's codes that would address...
That can be done.
Times that they can start and step in.
There's code enforcement at all. And MNI has built in the city before, so I'm sure they are part of it.
And so therefore, they will at least be...
They have to be respectful of the...
Respectful to us before they start to put up any, so we'll have that wall put up before they start any building?
We will discuss that with them, but it is, you know, we do have to understand, the construction zone is a construction zone. It's just exactly like what's going on on Mitchell Hammock Road right now. It's a construction zone, it's a little bit inconvenient. When it's all done and it's beautiful, everybody will forget about the...
Is there a certain time that they're given to complete their subdivision?
And you mean sell it out? That's, this is, that would be a prime end to...
Because that is my concern as well, that it would take years for them to complete the subdivision. And I'm sitting there with tractors and hose in my backyard.
Brian, wouldn't they have to put a cell screen around the property?
Yes, sir, they'll have to take all, all the necessary erosion controls of any construction project would have to be put in place before construction could begin.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to let you know, you know, I, I'm your neighbor, I live in Riverside. And I, don't take this the wrong way, but I put up with Live Oak and Sanctuary, so I watch all get built, okay? So I just had to throw that out.
I was waiting for that to come.
I just had to throw that out, but, but in all seriousness, you know, it's, it's a great area. And I will tell you, having been in Riverside for so long, and, and Mr. Dow Rimple mentioned that he did some work in, in Oviedo many years ago when they were building in my neighborhood, I will tell you, they were very good. They're supervisors, anytime there was a problem, they were out there. And I will tell you, my recollection from that time was they went above and beyond. And I can assure you, with Councilman Shank and I, he's in Live Oak and I'm in Riverside, we're going to watch.
Good, thank you.
So you'll be, you'll be in good hands.
Thank you.
And I didn't mean that, I love you guys, I just was mentioning, that was rough when I had both, I was coming from all sides, you know? The tractors in Live Oak, tractors in Sanctuary, but, you know, it's all good. It'll be good.
At least Sanctuary got finished, Live Oak got turned upside down there for a while.
That's true.
That's right, they're still building a couple.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jacob Givada, 2633 Turtle Head Cove, Amy's neighbor. I've been doing real estate for over 10 years. I've done business within my homes in different communities, and I've seen them bend over backwards for their to-be homeowners. And I see them put restrictions on certain lots, usually the lots that back up against another community. Whether it's a smaller lot, no pool, or, or what have you. The buffer would be great, putting up a fence would be even better. I don't want to say I want to be tough, whatever my neighbors agree to, I know, I'll back them up 100%. But the more distance that we have to have that conservation, I think it'll be better for us and better for their community. The people that are buying those high-end homes will appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else, guys? Sure. Name and address for the record, please.
Larry Berman, 3675 Heirloom Rose Place. Just to sort of get this clear in my mind, I was the one who asked you if that church property was going to stay church. And I was assured that it was going to stay church property or building in that vein. And we were then told, "Oh, no, that was already sort of in discussion that they were going to purchase." Why I bring that up is, we are not getting the notices, meaning the Homeowners Association, I'm the vice president, that you're supposed to give your neighbors notice that you're going to build, that you require so we can come and talk intelligently when you discuss these things. We were caught blindsided. And our own members were angry at us because we were not upfront with them. So I want to make sure, please, that the next section that was for the church and now is going to be possibly residential, that you make sure that we're notified so we can appear and give our comments. That, that's all I'd like. Thank you.
Mr. Berman, just, no, you can sit. Mr. Cobb, we're all meeting notices as required by law, met?
To my knowledge, yes, sir.
That we don't, it's not required by law that notices necessarily be sent out. You have to post the property, and I, I haven't been out there, but I'm going to assume that the property has the red signs on it. So that, that's how, that's how the notices are done. And especially if it's a sale, that's not a... You know, and then to answer, to answer your other question on, on the church, it's the same thing as the gentleman who spoke earlier on the golf course. When there is nothing before us, you know, whether it's, whether it's proposed, a concept, if there isn't anything turned into our staff, there isn't anything, it's a church. So, you know, I, I know that sounds like we're, we're trying to wiggle around the issue, but we're really not. Until there's a plan, that's why I asked them, you know, "Why aren't you coming in with the whole thing?", because at this point, but, you know, until it, staff has it, until they've reviewed it, until it's gone through all the steps, DRC, ECA, depending on the project, you know, and gets up to us, as far as we're concerned, at that point, there isn't anything, so. And I do apologize, but that's just kind of the way it is.
Yeah, the mayor hit a good point. The best thing to do is like when you're riding by like this, you'll always see, they're small, but they're bright. There's, they'll, they'll be signs, you'll see these little red and orangey signs that'll be on the property. And at that point, you'll know something's going on, but we'll keep an eye on it for you, I know I will.
Well, plus, this is a resolution, this isn't even ordinance, but, you know, if we, we sent out notices to everybody on every concept that comes into our staff on a pre-application hearing, you know, we'd be mailing, doing nothing but mailing postcards all day because there are...
So where are we in this discussion?
Many wild ideas. Hang on, Keith, I don't know yet. Is there anybody else who wants to address this? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comments and bring the applicant back up.
If I can, to get Allison Turnbull just to speak to some of the legal technicalities, and then, and then I'll make my comments, if that's all right. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Allison Turnbull with Holland and Knight, 200 South Orange Avenue in Orlando. I just wanted to clarify, just for the record, and if you would just humor me. On, at the August 5th meeting, the resolution was adopted that, that rezoned and adopted the new comp plan designation. So I just want to make sure that we're all very focused. We're just considering the three conditions of approval that were placed on there and whether or not we've met those. And I, you know, the second approval, I think, is what we're all most focused on, which is that the applicant will meet and work with the neighboring Sanctuary subdivision residents about the issues discussed. So when we're considering it, I just want to make sure that everything stays focused on, it's really the fence slash wall issue and whether or not we have met this condition. So with that, I'm going to let Brian walk through some options.
And Allison, for the record?
Mm-hmm.
We asked them to go work with them. Obviously, no resolution has been brought back, so that condition, in my mind, has not been met, but thank you very much.
Absolutely, and I would, I would respectfully disagree because they, they didn't meet and work with them. So let me let Brian walk you through some, and I may be back up.
Tit for tat won't get me a long, long way here tonight, but if I would have thought for a second I could have got a vinyl fence and a buffer approved in August, I could be building homes today. With respect to the, to the dollar figures, the price that I quoted Sandra is the cost to construct a wall inclusive of surveying, legal costs, easements. We offered to pay the HOA's legal fees associated with recording easements and creating the, the documents that would be in the amendments required to the HOA docs and decks that would allow us to co-own or co-maintain a wall together. And so I stand by my $85,000 quote that I gave her for 900 feet of a wall, which is Phase One, and if it ever is a Phase Two.
So Brian, what you're really saying is your whole cost was 170,000?
No, no, it's, 85 is the whole cost. Our proposal was to split that cost 50/50.
Well, how are they getting a bill for $86,000?
I couldn't tell you how they got there. I mean, I told them the whole number, and I didn't, I didn't send them the half cost. I sent them the whole cost and proposed to split the cost 50/50.
That was for the 500 feet, not for the other side?
It's not 500 feet, it's 400 and change in Phase One, and it's 460 in Phase Two.
That was for the whole phase?
For Phase One was a written proposal, and what I gave her yesterday was for Phase Two, added Phase Two. And again, I said to her, "There is no such thing as a Phase Two." But for the record of just answering your question, I'm going to, I'm going to give Phase Two's linear measurement and the proposal to build a wall in Phase Two.
Irrelevant.
Okay, so where are we?
So I, I would like to propose that, and I've got an easement, I've got a document that would show it. And the plan that you have in front of you shows a seven-foot easement on the document, where the, where the fence would go. And I propose that we would put the fence on the seven-foot line. It would no longer be an easement. That seven feet would go towards a buffer. And we put the fence on the property line because it'll become the property owned the individual lot owners. It wouldn't be in a tract and be owned by the HOA. That's always been our, our proposal. So the e, the buffer would be seven feet. The vinyl fence would run the entire length of Phase One, because that's what we're discussing here tonight. We would put wax myrtles and, again, five-foot centers is just, the myrtles are six feet wide, so you couldn't do five-foot centers. We'd put wax myrtles on, on 10-foot centers along that entire property line. And we would sod the, sod the buffer. Again, if there are trees that can be saved when we're clearing the land, we want to save trees. Trees are good for our neighbors, are good for our homeowners. We'll do our best to save everything we can in the buffer. But without having the engineering plans and the elevations, I just don't know what that last seven feet is going to look like. And so there's trees in there, great, we'll plant the myrtles anyway, and we'll sod that area back to the property line. And that will forever be a conservation tract that abuts the, I thought it was 20 feet, but I think Sandra said it's 25, so that would abut the, the buffer to Sanctuary now.
Seven feet, not 10.
Yes, sir.
Why are you proposing giving up the easement?
Sorry?
Why are you proposing making each individual homeowner have to maintain that fence rather than the HOA?
Commissioner Britton, they would, they would have to maintain that fence in our original proposal. It was just an easement for a fence. And the fence in our HOA docs, those individual fences, if it was a wall, we'd put it in a tract. And, and the entire HOA would be responsible to maintain it. When it's a fence, that fence becomes the individual property owner's fence. In our HOA docs, it requires that homeowner to maintain that fence in perpetuity. And if they do not do it, the HOA has the right to come in and maintain that fence for them and to lean their property for whatever that cost is.
Is it specifically written out in the covenants of the property?
It's, if it's not in our, if it's not in our docs, it will be. I believe it's typical in our docs, right?
Yes. Mr. Groot, do you have any issue with how they're proposing to do it?
No, sir. If, if this ultimately is approved this way, I have some recommendations in conjunction with language that Mr. Cobb is helping put together relative to the resolution that you would have done.
Are you in a position to share that with us now, or do you need a couple more minutes to put it together?
Well, Brian and I haven't talked about it exactly, so what I'm thinking is that, the, I mean, obviously, you're not going to have an Exhibit One anymore that would be approvable, correct, Brian?
Can you tell us what Exhibit One is, Mr. Groot?
Exhibit One is your development agreement and master plan.
Because you don't have a master plan.
Okay.
We're making changes to it as we speak.
Basically, we, we could require as part of the resolution, you could require that the plans be revised...
Well, I've, I've got that.
Prior to execution.
That's where I'm, where I'm going is, is so you could have everything on the record. And the last recital says that all the conditions were satisfied. What I've heard is they weren't. So I would add the word "not satisfied" to that last whereas clause. Then I would add a new whereas clause saying, "Whereas the city council has accepted the applicant's proposal to accomplish the following." Then you would list the items that Mr. Cobb's working on. Then, on Section One and Section Two of the resolution, I would strike "provided in Exhibit One", and I would say "subject to the provisions of Section Three", which is the provision that allows Mr. Cobb to implement your decision. And with all those conditions listed, you could do that, couldn't you? That would take care of everything.
Do you agree?
And if I could address Mr. Britton's question about why, why not have an easement? Mr. Britton, when there's an easement in the back of the property, it's, it's a headache for everybody, just to be quite honest. People purchase the property to their rear property line. But then later on, they find out, "Oh, lo and behold, in this case, 7% of my property I can't utilize." So we have always been proponents of, if you're going to put a buffer on your perimeter, put that buffer in a tract, have the Homeowners Association own it so that they can go back there and they can, they don't have to go on anyone else's land so they can maintain it. In this case, Mr. Dow Rimple has, has offered to let it stay in a natural state, basically, to put plantings back there and keep it in a natural state. Obviously, with it being on the, as he called, the seven-foot property line, being on the interior of that buffer, the homeowners, I would assume, would be required to maintain their side of the fence, and then the HOA would maintain the other side because that would be on their property and they would be able to access it. Anytime that, any, these structures are in an easement, it... an easement, if the HOA needs to go in and maintain it, it's difficult on the property owners. It's difficult on the HOA. We even had a situation one time where the homeowner actually went and deeded his easement to his HOA just because it was causing more harm than good. So, that's why we've always been proponents of, anytime there's a buffer yard, to put it into a separate tract and not make it part of the lot that the homeowners are purchasing.
I was more concerned with a long-running fence
Yes, sir.
that could be maintained by an HOA and be consistent rather than, you know, it happens to everyone. You get one or two that won't maintain it and won't cooperate, and then you've got another problem on your hands to be fixed.
That is correct. The other thing, too, is that people, one of the things about, like Mr. Dow Ripley has recommended, with it being along the rear property line, what would become the rear property line is the connecting of the side fences. That's possible now. If it were set back in the easement, sometimes we ran into it with another neighborhood, if you all remember, where the fence was set on the backside of the easement and then...
They couldn't use their own property.
The homeowners couldn't connect to it because of the easement, the limitations that the easement placed on them. And so, that's one of the reasons that we like to keep that tract separate from lots.
Now, are the vegetation, the wax myrtles, going to be planted on the seven-foot easement and the fence on the inside of those, or?
It'll become a tract now, though. I mean, it won't be an easement. It'll be a tract now. It won't be an easement. It'll be a tract owned by the HOA.
Where the wax myrtles are planted?
Seven-foot wax myrtles in front of the fence?
It's, you know, fence back of property line, seven feet, buffer, end of property, sanctuary. I've actually got a visual. It just doesn't show the fence on the property line, but it'd actually make it easier to go in and enforce the rear maintenance, which is one of the sanctuary's concerns, is the fence facing them. You know, you're going to get the mold off it, you're going to keep it clean, and so if there's a tract there, it actually would meet.
So, the HOA will actually maintain that tract?
The HOA will maintain the track. It will give them the ability to visually inspect the rear of the fence facing the sanctuary.
That's what really I was looking for, is how the HOA's going to do that.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make one point before, because it seems like we're going down this road with buffer and fence and everything. And I just want to be very clear. This gentleman came up and brought up a good point, said he'd be happy with this, that'd be fine, but he really wants the wall. I hear the HOA president say she's willing to split the cost if she gets the right numbers. So, before we start going down the road to approve what we think is the easier way out, I want to make sure that the HOA is good with this and that they have the right numbers and they can make the right decision. If they're willing to split the wall and you're willing to split it, then that's an option that I'm kind of hearing we're just sidestepping here, and I want to make sure that that's what everybody wants. I think this is a great compromise. The mayor kind of brokered here, and I think it's going to look really nice, so I'm good with it. But I want to make sure, because I don't want to hear them back here if and when we get an application for something else. So, you all need to figure that out and make sure that we're good before we go because I can hear, I can see this causing an issue. So, let's make sure we're all clear now that that's the direction.
I, you know, the challenge tonight is that I've heard the HOA, or at least members of the community, say, okay with a vinyl fence, okay with a buffer. I think we're about three feet apart, as I see it standing here now. I'll be happy to tell Sandra the numbers, which I've given her to an email. It's 85 grand. And the problem is, is that the time it takes to, I don't know, it takes to get to the board and get to a vote, do they need 74%, which is a typical requirement. And I mean, I've got a subdivision and people that are just whooping my tail to get it developed and get homes built.
I just want to make sure they're good. It sounds like everybody's good.
And you're going to commit, that's going to be the same all the way across, come back in here for the church property?
No question about it, Mayor.
All right. That's important. So, you'll do it exactly the same. Mr. Groot? Well, we don't have a motion on the table just yet. Would you like me to ask for a motion on the resolution, and then you can amend it, and we'll make sure that all the legal minds in the room are happy with the way it gets amended? Does that sound logical?
Can I just be clear that the way it gets amended means that, I believe, it's Section 3 that gives the city manager, as the land use administrator, I believe what you're saying is, we put the conditions on the table tonight, if the vote is successful, that we would then just be able to clarify the fence going into the buffer and clarify the fence and the tract, and the city manager can approve those, and we can move forward with our project?
That's the way it would work if that motion were approved with the changes I made.
Can't promise you anything.
Yeah, all right.
But I can promise you this. You have a very smart legal mind right there from Holland and Knight.
Yeah.
And we have Mr. Groot, who's been not only an expert legal mind in land use, but has been with us for 20 years.
Yes, sir.
They'll figure it out.
All right.
All right. Mr. Mayor. Guys, what is your pleasure?
Megamolusian to accept, approve Resolution 2785-14.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you like to amend your motion, Mr. Schenk?
No. The motion was to accept it as discussed?
As it's written.
No.
No.
As it's written.
I have to have paper. You asked them to go back six months ago to talk, to do some things, whatever. I'm good.
His motion is to approve exactly the way it is here, without anything Mr. Groot said. Got a motion and a second.
Okay. And we're going to bring it back in two weeks.
No, somebody can ask to amend it, or make a motion to it.
Point of order.
Mr. Groot, if we vote on this and it's not passed, can we propose another motion with the same conditions?
Yes, sir.
We can also make, somebody can, I can't make motions. Somebody can make a motion to amend it. Let's see if you get a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the Resolution 2785 to incorporate
To amend the motion.
To amend the motion with the changes that Mr. Groot read.
Is there a second?
Well, to do that, we need, there was one missing part of what I read, and that's what Brian's going to read.
Mr. Groot, do we have to vote this down first and then re-vote it, or we can just amend the motion? We haven't done this in a long time.
Actually, your first vote would be whether or not to amend the motion, and then if it was that passed, then you would vote on the amendment.
Got to brush up on my Robert's rules here. You could have just made it easy.
I'm not going to.
I can see. Is there a...
You need a second on the motion.
I was going to say, you need a second for Mr. Hinkin.
I'll second the motion to amend the motion.
We have a second. All those in favor of amending the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Brian, what amendment would you like to add to the motion?
Okay, now you need a motion to amend that motion.
All right. Councilman? That's what he did.
Councilmember Schenk, did you vote against that or not?
What was, was that four?
Four to one.
But the motion was, that motion was whether or not to amend. Now, you need to propose your amendment.
So, I got to do what I can. Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, for Resolution 2785-14, to amend with all the changes that Mr. Groot read to us.
Okay.
Okay, I'll second that, whatever it was.
Now, Mr. Cobb needs to read that missing part component of the motion that I edited.
And Holland and Knight needs to agree.
Which are the changes that would be made.
Just for clarity, Mr. Groot, would you mind just rereading everything with Brian's involved? Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then Brian can...
We're not going to let him start.
Okay. The resolution would be revised to amend the last recital, the last whereas clause, to add the word "not" between "were satisfied," change that period to a semicolon, then add a new recital whereas clause to say, "The city council has accepted the applicant's proposal, however, to accomplish the following." And then, Mr. Cobb would have a list, and let me just go ahead. Then, in the substance of the resolution, Section 1 and Section 2 would strike the words "provided in Exhibit 1" and add the words "subject to the provisions of Section 3." Just for clarification, the operative effect would be to allow Mr. Cobb to implement your decision with the changes that he's about ready to read.
Do these?
They go at the end of the last whereas, the new last.
Will we also need to incorporate them down into the sections?
No, because we are okay with these recitals.
All right. Why don't you read that last, the new last whereas?
Whereas, "The city council has accepted the applicant's proposal, however, to accomplish the following."
And then what we would insert under that would be, "The amended and restated development agreement and master land use plan shall be revised prior to execution by the mayor as follows. A seven-foot buffer yard shall be placed along the north property line adjacent to the north property lines of lots 25 through 31. The buffer yard shall consist of a six-foot PVC privacy fence and wax myrtles planted 10 feet, a minimum 10 feet on center."
That's where you go.
I worked with David Wallen about this, to make sure that that would work. We always throw that in because half the time, we say something that a plant needs, and David Arbors says, you really don't want to do that. So, if we could just throw, like we usually do, something that our arbors assure that that plan, you know, works.
That's up to the motion. Do you want the arbors involved? Or you just want to leave it alone, Councilman?
You could take a look at it. I'm agreeable to that.
Second, you agree?
I agree.
So, we add "subject to approval of the city arbors"?
Yeah. You want to make sure that stuff is going to live for a long time. It's fine.
Can we just clarify, subject to the city arbors' comments on spacing? Is that okay?
That's fair.
Thank you.
There are trees. She had to earn her fee tonight, so. I know how this works. All righty, Brian, do we have it now? Uh, yes, sir. Holland and Knight agree?
Yes.
Motioner and seconder agree?
Yes, sir.
All right. The motion on the table is to adopt the motion as amended by Mr. Cobb. So, it's Resolution Number 2785-14. All in favor of that amended motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, 5/0. Have a great night, everyone. That took a long time. All righty, we're going to take a five-minute break, let everybody clear, and then we'll finish up. finish up. I've got mics, but tell us when we're hot. We're good? All right. Reconvene the meeting, it is quarter of nine, and we are on to reports. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one, one item for you. The mayor and the deputy mayor and myself attended the Board of County Commissioners meeting on the fourteenth. We attended a work session to discuss the opportunity for a referendum for reinstituting the local option sales tax. The information that was provided by, it was, they, the Board of County Commissioners received a report from a company that conducted a survey over the Christmas holidays. They contacted six hundred and three people, and they gave the results of it. The long story short is, the county commission gave consensus to move forward with the referendum. Today, the mayor and I attended the mayors and managers' meeting, which they gave the presentation one other, again. I did send you an email, a copy of the, um, the packet that was presented to us, it's got my notes written on it as well. There's going to be another work session that's going to be conducted by the county commission. It'll be on the twenty-eighth, and they're going to get a little more detailed this time, start actually talking about, um-
And if anybody would like to attend, Brian, I think they said it was late morning-
Late morning.
So based on the last one that the three of us attended, that's probably ten-ish, ten-thirty-ish, depending on what they got on their agenda. Brian, I'm sorry.
And I can tell you, it, it, it made a difference that we were there. I honestly believe, because when we walked in today, we were very well received by the county delegation at our meeting today. So I think it made a difference that we did have representation at the work session. They know that we're, we're serious about it, and they know that we're willing to work with them, so. But if you have any questions about the report that was emailed to you, you know, please let me know. I'll be happy to relay anything to the county manager if it's something that I can't answer myself. But the results of the survey were really good. There was one note in, in particular, um, the opposition is less than forty percent, and the pollster firmly believed that, since it is less than forty percent, that the referendum has a very good chance of passing. So they were very confident in the results. Mayor, that's all I have.
And Brian, I'll just add one thing to that. At the twenty-eighth, the conversation is going to involve the distribution of the funds. And the general consensus is to update the formula, but keep it the same as the past two referendums. So essentially, that would be twenty-five percent for the school board, thirty-seven percent or so to the county, and then thirty-seven and a half percent divided up amongst the county and the cities. The last referendum, it meant to veto about approximately ten, eleven million dollars. So since our population has grown, we would anticipate, uh, more this time. So the county manager did announce today that they're working on a, a new formula, and that that is what they're going to be discussing the twenty-eighth. I'm going to assume that it might be shared amongst the managers ahead of time, I, I don't know, but, uh, we'll, we'll see. I know also, they mentioned today, Bobby, I think you're meeting tomorrow, right, all the public works directors, to discuss, uh, projects? Because the referendum would be done, the same as in the past, list of projects that each municipality, including the school board, would spend the money on, and, um, we would just go forward from, from that point. So we'll just wait and see. Possible may referendum?
It must have been a ballot, though. Something that they-
They, uh, they talked about polls. I, I don't know, they didn't say anything about mail today. No, they, they talked about-
I saw something that they had a mail, mail's had about- Yeah, they were talking about maybe doing a mail ballot.
Oh, were they? No, they, they didn't do that today, or the other meeting, you don't remember them saying-
That wasn't brought up.
Deputy Mayor, the last time? They didn't say anything about that.
No, there was nothing said. I've, I've heard that before, that there were-
One of the news towns, I don't know.
Well, they've been, they've been talking, that's been the talk for a while, is doing a mail-only ballot, but they didn't mention that at all.
I guess we'll find out. All right. Mr. Groot, what do you got for us?
All is well, all is good, and no report tonight.
Nice. Nice. Councilwoman?
All is well and all is good.
Councilmember Britton?
Wow. Well, I have a few things. One is, uh, we had-
Of course.
A good time at the MLK parade the other day, it's always a good time. And the, uh, the fun day was a great event. I wish we would have got more publicity, seems like some of the other venues got more publicity than us, but we had a good time and we enjoyed ourselves, so that's all that counts. And the only other thing I have is that Calno met two weeks ago, and, and they selected me as the chairman, so that doesn't mean much to me.
Congratulations.
It means a lot to Barbara, because they have to do the minutes now.
Aren't you supposed to be giving me back that board? You've had it for like three years now. Congratulations, now that's good.
So, uh, we're going to work on having, uh, less onerous minutes and, and not make it such a big deal for the city clerk's office, but move on from there. That's all I have.
Uh, I have no report. Mont Luther King was awesome, great job, Drew, and, um, next year I'm sure there'll be even more improvements made to it. And with that being said, we'll move on to deputy mayor.
Uh, I'd definitely say the same. The MLK was a great event, thanks to everybody. Somebody mentioned the word lighting before, and, and, you know, I meant to bring up the lighting at the ball fields. Definitely looks really good. I mean, I've seen it nights and mornings, and it really, you know, you can visi, visibly see that it's pointed down and the spillovers a lot.
So does the playground. I forgot to mention-
Yeah, the playgrounds look phenomenal. Those both playgrounds, the both areas look phenomenal there.
Well, just for the record, that's the new playground in Round Lake Park, which, you know, whomever may be watching this said, "Ten of Nine" really needs to get out there and use it.
But yeah, the lighting at the ball field, it's spillover, it's visually, you can really notice the difference just visually, so that, that's really great. And, uh, Chamber had the State of the Cities, uh, the mayor gave, it was more of a town hall format, um, where they asked the questions, gave a little, uh, speech, and then more question and answer. But, uh, Mayor did a great job there, representing us.
Thank you, Councilman. Not sure I liked the format, though.
Yeah, I like the format.
It was a change, it was different.
It was different.
Uh, but, that's okay. See, their event, we do whatever they, they like. And as far as that playground equipment goes, I think the councilwoman's grandson just about wore it all out, so.
They did, they loved it.
They were having a great time. They had thirty other kids, but, uh-
And made sure that the mayor had company, being the grand marshal in that parade.
That was, uh, he was, well-
That was cool.
Zack is awesome.
Thank you, thank you.
Sitting there in the car with him, just, the things that he thinks of as we're going down, and the people he knows, and, you know, he, I don't know if you could see him, he was pointing to everybody.
Oh, yeah.
He was cracking up.
Wait, we're cracking up, he's teaching them.
He's pointing at people, giving them the point, giving them the show. There was some, there was some friend of his in, in school that he was doing a project with, with a wristbands or something he was talking about. He's going, "I haven't gotten to it yet, but I've forgotten you, buddy." It was great.
Cindy's grandson decided why he was sitting in the float, because he saw the mayor riding as the grand marshal in his own private car. So he said, "Wait a minute, I should be in that car." He, he stopped the whole parade, he got out, and he sat next to Dominique for the whole day. It was, it was incredible, but he had a great time, that was good.
He loved it.
That's all that matters, and boy, did you guys have fun with our confetti cannon.
Yeah, we did.
No, that was you.
That was Britton, yeah.
Councilmember Hankin, you're up, and then we'll get everyone out of here.
Just, uh, one quick thing, um, I just wanted, again, and Jeff, you know, losing Capsel, that's a tough blow, um, but a good man, and, um, I just want to also, you know, let everybody know that Dana Allen also retired. Dana chose to, to be low-key, as Dana always is, you know, he didn't want to come in.
He rode off into the sunset.
He just wanted to ride out, uh, you know, I think-
I think he sailed off.
I think many of us went to, went to visit him. I know that was not a happy meeting for me, because those always get emotional. I hate to see our guys leave, you know, you kind of, you know, for me, nine years, kind of grow up with these guys, you know, you lay in bed at night, you know, they're always there, and you have complete faith in them, so, you know, to see Tim and, and Dana leave, you know, I just hope the, the door is not opening, although I know you could all leave tomorrow, so stick around a little bit, you know, we don't want you all to go, but, you know, just, again, Tim and Dana do a great job, and whoever you're sticking in the wings, just make sure that they have their phone numbers, so they can learn that way, and we'll be good. So I hope he has a good retirement, both of them. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor. It was, I, I will agree with you, it was hard reading the resolution tonight.
Yeah, the mayor, the mayor, you could see, the mayor was having a hard, we just, that's, that, those are tough, you know, retirement, you know? It's not good.
We know where Tim lives. Exactly. All righty, future meeting dates. We have Monday, February third, uh, six-thirty PM regular session. The tenth of February is a work session. Seventeenth of February, regular session, six-thirty PM, I'm sorry, the work session's at five-thirty PM. March third, six-thirty PM regular session. And then Monday, March seventeenth, there is no meeting. I am going to assume that is spring break.
Spring break holiday.
Spring break week, all righty. With all of that being said, does anybody have anything else for us? Everybody forgot how hard land use hearings are, but that's okay. All righty, with that being said, meetings adjourned.